I'm going to call this meeting to order. It is the special council meeting on Thursday, March 26th.
Twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth. Twenty eighth. Thank you. And may we have the roll call, please? City Clerk.
Councilmember Edgar.
Here.
Councilmember Gross.
Here.
Councilmember Murphy.
Here.
Mayor Protem Graham Mahia.
Here.
Mayor Kusamoto.
Here. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the oral communications. So at this time, members of the public wishing to speak may come forward, speak on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Remarks are to be limited to no more than five minutes per speaker. And then normally, we would also have oral communication. We will have oral communications for the next item four. So you can either speak now, or you can speak at the item four. And we just asked that you speak once, so we can kind of move things along. So with that, are there any members of the public that would wish to speak?
Seeing none.
Seeing none, we're going to go ahead and close.
Speak at the item.
Yeah, we'll speak. We'll open oral communications at item four. Okay, so seeing none, we're going to go ahead and close oral communications, and the next item will be closed session. Could we have a quick, I don't know, just you just read the title?
I think people out there are acting like they don't know what's going on. Are we going straight into the closed session?
Well, we're going to open up for oral, right? So for the item four.
Oh, I see.
Item four. Public comments on item four.
Right. Well, item four is listed as a closed session item, but members of the public do have an opportunity to address the council at a special meeting on the item that is on the agenda. And even though the council portion of this discussion is set up as a closed session item due to attorney-client privilege under the provision in the Brown Act that allows conference with legal counsel to discuss, among other things, the potential initiation of litigation. And we've indicated, despite the fact that the Brown Act didn't require that we list the subject matter in this circumstance, as a result of council request, we did list the subject matter as the proposed development in the city of Cypress. So at this point, it would be appropriate to hear from members of the community who wish to address the council, and then afterward, go into closed session for council discussion.
So at this time, we'll open it for public comment, and please limit your comments to no more than three minutes. Anybody wishing to speak?
And I'm trying to talk to everybody. I gave you the site plan. Now, there is still some problem about what that site plan is going to be capable of. Now, they're saying 176 semi-truck bays. And Prologis admits at the open house, some of you were there, most of you were there, that they will be unloading the truck bays twice a day. Now, the delivery trucks have rear end doors, and they are loaded by hand in their own venue. They are not loaded and unloaded at the truck bays that are on your site map that I gave you. So now, does one semi that docks twice a day to 176 bays load two delivery trucks? Yes, I think so. We're talking more than 500 trucks a day. Okay? That's all I want to say. Because there's been some, "Oh, it's only 176 trucks." This is a distribution center. And what is the turn and the utilization of a distribution center? Okay, I'm not, I didn't do ton each. I think you guys can see that. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak?
Hi. My name's Serena Howard. I live at 11081 Enterprise. And I think we've hashed this over every five years. It's the first time I've ever spoke. I usually just sit there. But I've collected signatures from everybody on my block on what we'd like to see considered when you do your environmental impacts study. And I'm just really getting tired of coming here every five years since I was 18 years old, and I'm 57, begging to not mess up my neighborhood. Because I went from Bunker Hill to Enterprise when I grew up, and that's the only place I've ever lived, and I've watched it just deteriorate for the last 57 years. And I'm going to go out feet-first. I'm not leaving. So that's it, and I have some petitions for you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
You can give them to the city manager, Serena.
Anybody else wishing to speak on this item?
I'm John Ellinger, and I live in New Dutch Haven, which is 11141 Mendoza Avenue, Los Alaminos. And number one, I want to know, when this goes through, if this goes through, who's going to pay for the repair in the street every six months or less? And I suggest, if it does go through, that they stop every one of these trucks and make them go over the scales, and then have a full inspection on each and every truck that ever goes in or out of there. The other thing is, is why can't they run out the other way, even if they have to pay the church over there money to use their roads? We don't need it. Cattella's like a freeway anyway, all day long, because I'm retired, and I get on that, and it's just, like I say, it's a freeway. We don't need it. We don't need them. And they should have thought about that before they bought the property.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wishing to speak?
My name's Mike Spillane, and I live in Carrier Row on Tarawa. Like the other ladies said, this is kind of, it's like deja vu. We went through this whole situation with the Cottonwood Christian Center, about putting a stoplight at Enterprise, about the flow-through traffic, and everything like that. There really, I don't think there's really a lot to discuss here. This is a situation that's already been addressed by the council. It's already been addressed by Los Alaminos. We, a lot of the people in the area, the city council at that time, got the Cottonwood Christian Center to, and I don't know if Cypress, how involved they were, but they put the road through Lexington for traffic purposes. And we ended up without having a light on Enterprise. There's one on the street that goes into the Cottonwood Christian Center before it gets there. So this has all been talked about before. It's ridiculous that we have to come back again and talk about putting a light in a left-hand turn lane and all that crap on Enterprise. It's going to have, that whole thing's going to have a negative impact on our neighborhoods. It's just, once again, it's more flow-through traffic, and with all the trucks going in and out of there, that's just going to impact the traffic even worse. And they don't restrict themselves to early in the morning, or the middle of the day, or something like that. I work in downtown Los Angeles, and there's trucks, just like there's going to be here. It's going to be all day long, and it's going to be all night long. And I'll tell you, I live there, and we already have the Shaw carpet trucks flying through there all the time in the middle of the night, and there's little bumps and stuff in that road out there, and it wakes you up at night. Sometimes you think there's an earthquake or something like that to hit those things so hard. And I can just imagine what another few hundred trucks a day is going to be like going through there. So I think it's on you guys up there to do whatever we can to stop this thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
How you guys doing? You all look great up there. Murphy, nice to see you up there. And the rest of you guys. I've been up here many times. Troy, you know I've been up here. We got over this with Cottonwood. I went to that meeting they had, and when I was talking to the guy from, what was it, Prologis, he was saying that originally, he goes, "They were trying to get me to get this land because this land is useless to them." The owner of the racetrack and all that property, he said it's useless to them unless they're able to get a light. And he was, so he goes, "I was trying to get Cottonwood Way moved down," which I think Troy might have been involved just recently about something like that. I don't know what that is, Troy. I hope you don't go that way with giving them that light. But that's what he was telling me, the land was useless, and the owner of the land was telling him, you know, "If you get this through, that would be great for us." And I think they've got some other plans to build other stuff there, but they need a light. When we did Cottonwood, we said we were going to give them, if I'm not mistaken, three turn-ins there. They got their three turn-ins. As the city of Cypress, we don't have to do anything for them. You guys are always talking about working with our neighbors and being good citizens. They have not been good to us. And all they do, I don't know, about 10 years ago, they started going down Lincoln and making that from a three-lane to a two-lane. They put parking on the street, and they turned it sideways. You know why? Because they don't want traffic through the middle of their city. They pushed it to the outside. Well, guess who's on the outside? We are. If you guys go ahead and do this, you know, you're just allowing them to eventually get warrants out so they could go ahead and put a light in. Any kind of movement that we give them, eventually they'll get some kind of warrant. We'll have no say in it, and they'll put a signal in there because it'll meet the criteria. We don't have to give them anything, and I would really appreciate if you guys would care about what the city, the citizens want. Everybody I talked to on my blocks, I went around just locally, they were all against it. I got petitions. I'm going to make copies and turn them in at another date that I don't believe they have to be in yet. But I didn't find one person for it. And I really think those of you that want to still be in council, if they go for it, they're going to get citizens to recall or whatever. And I don't know if you guys care about that. Troy, I know you have other aspects of, you know, outside, you were trying to go upstate, you know, but that, whatever. I mean, most of you, I believe, are citizens, growing up here and raised here, and you guys care about the city you live in. And I think you guys ought to watch out for us, the people that put you up there, to protect us. Now, my suggestion to them was, hey, you guys could get in the lane, right, Cottonwood Way, and build it right over there to Cerritos. Not that we want to throw the traffic down to Cerritos, but if they do that, at least it's not all the traffic on Cattella. And eventually, when I was in the Traffic Commission with Warren, they were talking about putting two unramps and two off-ramps over here on Cerritos. At least it would get some of the traffic where it's not so bad. And the only time we've got to worry about it is maybe we could work with them some kind of school time where they are not running. But that would definitely be a better situation. I don't like it at all. I'd rather we do retail there, because it's less people coming in from all around the neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Thank you.
Can I, one more minute?
No.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Warren. I hope you guys all do the right thing, though.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak?
Thank you. Dave Emerson, I do not live in Carrier Row. I live in Suburbia Estates, which is quite a ways away from Carrier Row. My neighbor's Alice Jemse. She worked really hard to negotiate the traffic mitigation agreement, which I believe Cypress has already violated repeatedly, and the rezoning continues to do that. Thank you so much for holding the meeting, breaking up your week. Everyone who called us and agreed to meet, I appreciate that. It's a complex situation. Time is not on our side, so moving quickly is important. The deadline for EIR concerns is this coming Tuesday. And I just want to encourage you to pick our city attorney's brain, and our, we've got a great city attorney, a great interim city manager, and pick their brains and use every tool available to us. We need to have every option in play as quickly as possible. The racetrack owner is making about a million bucks an acre on industrial property, based on the sale price for the Prologis, which does have an unwound agreement in it, by the way. I've looked over the documents and sent them to some of you. Thirty-three million bucks for the Prologis program alone. That's what, three years of our city budget? I mean, we are up against it here as a community, but this affects everyone. I just finished posting our Highland Guy weekly post, which is about the effects of diesel upon especially the elderly and the children, and especially downwind from truck paths. EPA estimates it'll be 20 years before our fleets are replaced with clean diesel. So this is not something that's going away tomorrow because of new regulations. And we all care about our seniors. We all care about our kids. And we're all downwind from the traffic pattern. And I don't care if they go in off of a new street, an old street, Cerritos, they're coming, they're getting off the freeway and getting on the freeway on Cattella. If they're not, they're getting on enough on Los Almavard. Some of them are getting on Valley View, which is why we should be able to help mobilize the neighborhoods there. But Prologis is the tip of the iceberg. This Monday, the Cypress City Council voted unanimously on their consent calendar to go ahead and endorse the June initiative to rezone the rest of the golf course away from open space, and the first 10 acres of the racetrack property itself. This week, it was announced that the racetrack is not going to pursue thoroughbred racing. Let's put two and two together. That racetrack is gone. They don't want any open space, and they got 33 million in the bank already, if we don't unwind the deal, to finance whatever they need to. So we got a problem. The flip side, I couldn't even park here because the kids taking the parking up, including our lot, for Saturday Night Lights. That should be a park. It can be a park. We deserve a regional park. And that should be part of our theme, and
Thank you, Mr. Emerson.
It benefits everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Emerson.
Hi, Jody Schloss from the Highlands. I too don't live in Carrier Row. I live in the Highlands. And I also feel that this is a very, bigger than just Carrier Row. It's not just Carrier Row. It's Cypress. Cypress doesn't want this. Their people don't even know about this. Very few of them know about it. We know more than they do. And how is that? I mean, I went to the council meeting, and just to follow up on something Dave Emerson said about, the vote that they took at their council meeting was in, it was a consent calendar item. It was 12 items in a consent calendar. Not one item was polled, and it was a 5-0 vote. No one pulled any item to discuss it or anything. There was no staff report. There was nothing, just to get that initiative on for the ballot for June 25th. And then, because two people spoke at that meeting, one from Los Almavard, one from Cypress, they normally don't respond, as we don't normally respond, or you don't, from the dais. But they did. They stopped the meeting, and they said, "Well, we're going to talk about this now." And through the city manager, they talked about it a little bit, and then the city council, a couple of them, spoke through the city manager, not really directly to the public. But they are acting like they don't know what's going on. I find this terrible, because how could they not know what's going on in their city? You know, the plans are on there. As far as I know, they have not contacted our city officially, staff to staff. So I don't understand what, they're trying to pull something over on their people and over on us, and trying to slide this project in. And this project, I don't care, somebody said 160 bays, or 70 bays, or I don't care. I don't care if it's 10 bays. 10 trucks is too many. Because once you let them build something, they may say it's only going to be this, or it's only going to be that, and it's going to be all green trucks. It is not going to be green trucks. And after that, who's going, as more and more trucks come, who's going to monitor the trucks? I mean, who's going to police it? Who's going to manage it? Who's going to coordinate it and control it? If you have all these different entities in there, it'll be a horrible coordination problem. I mean, just getting the trucks behind my house, and by the way, I want to thank you for the, going to the elected officials' meeting, because it helped. It honestly helped. It's pretty good now. So seriously, this is a much huger problem. Like Dave Emerson said, they're just going to continue on and continue on, and they're playing dumb, like they don't know what's going on. I know you really don't have the power to control them. And by the way, please, I heard the last meeting, there was a couple of people up here who want to continue the relationship with Cypress, and they don't know, you don't want to, you don't know, this is a done deal, and what can we do? Fight it. That's what you can do. And they don't care about us. I was at their meeting. They didn't say, "Oh, we can't do this because we want to keep our relationship with Los Alaminos." They said nothing about Los Alaminos. So fight this.
Thank you. Just for the members of the public, this portion of oral communications is limited to three minutes, so do try and limit your discussion to that. Apologies for the, maybe if there's a misunderstanding during the prior topic, where you could have spoken for five minutes, but we'd ask that you just limit it to three, if at all possible. And if there's something that runs over, ask, and then we'll see if there's a motion to extend your time to speak, okay?
Well, Mayor, can we do that now? Can we just ask if there's consensus to allow people to speak? I mean, they've taken the time to come down here.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mayor Protem Graham Mahia to allow five minutes of speaking at this portion of the agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
You have a second from Mr. Murphy? So any discussion on that? So motion is to extend it to five minutes. Can I have a vote? Just by, all those affairs, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so five minutes. Thanks, Wendy. Please, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Nancy Wheatley. I live in New Dutch Haven on Mendoza Street. There was a question, when is all the information due to Cypress? Is it April 2nd? Then why is this on April 3rd? It's just the way it is.
Okay, why don't you clarify what you're talking about? Because for people who are watching, and that's why this is being videoed today.
Okay, it's an EIR scoping meeting
Okay.
That is welcoming our input over at the Seventh Day Adventist Church over by the racetrack.
Right.
So it would seem like they should back their date up a little bit, because they're still getting impact from us, the residents, of who this is going to affect entirely. Where I live, I, one side of my neighborhood is the arms forces base, which we had the helicopters doing their routines, and their takeoffs and everything. That's on one side. And now, the, what is proposed by Cypress is going to be all those trucks. The pollution we already get from the helicopters, and every time it rains, there is just black that comes off of my roof. And I'm sure that's from the Jet A fuel and all the stuff from the helicopters, which is very disturbing. Okay. And the other thing I want to say is, if they do put a road in so they can go down Cerritos, that's also going straight through Los Alaminos. I mean, that's, if that's the option, other than Cattella, well, that's our Los Alaminos too. So I'm against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak on this item?
Good evening, Council. Javier Mahia, Los Alaminos resident. I think it's pretty obvious that, you know, the people that are kind of moved by this are against the idea of what potentially could negatively affect our community. I just saw on the news that they're talking about shutting down the fire pits on the beach because of the emissions. And I just think that it's funny that even Cypress would consider to bring any kind of impact like that to the communities right here from the trucks and the traffic. And it's not just the trucks, but the trucks impact the traffic, slowing down every other car on the road, and it exponentially increases the emissions. And so it just, it's amazing to me that, you know, you have communities that are talking about, you know, this kind of thing, and then we have others that are just, you know, "Hey, let's just not talk to our neighbor." Here, it sounds like we're worried about what our local other communities, let's be friends with them, but they're not mentioning that. So I think we need to really step back, dig our heels in. All of you were elected to represent the people of Los Alaminos. And I think that that is the number-one thing. And whether you yourself may have some personal interest in the project, pro or against, I think that, you know what, the people that you represent are asking you, they're begging you right now, to stand up, and let's show some backbone. And we may not, we may not be able to fight this battle. I mean, it may be too big, but we at least must make an effort. I mean, you can't win if you don't try. You can't slow this thing down if we don't get in the way. And I think that's what the people are asking of you, to just get in the way of Cypress and say, "Hey, we're not here to be steamrolled." So thank you very much.
Jay Mivler. I'm not going to actually talk about trucks or anything else. What I'm going to talk about is, you're about to go into that room. And the property that's being under discussion is owned by the Bardis family. This summer, the Bardis family made donations to Mr. Edgar's Assembly Campaign. Ms. Catherine Bardis donated the maximum of $1,250, and Sarah Bardis also donated $1,250. I remember when Ken Stevens said, "I can't go, I can't participate because I'm an employee of 24-Hour Fitness." And the perception that I might make a decision based upon conflict of interest means I shouldn't be there. Mr. Edgar, you've taken money from the Bardis family, who can gain up to $33 million of the sale going through. To quote our former city attorney, "It is up to each individual council member to decide whether they have a conflict." I can't say whether you're conflicted or not. I can only say that the record shows you've taken money in the last year from the Bardis family, and they will have a financial windfall if we don't fight this. And I am asking that you do as Mr. Stevens did. I'm asking that you do what Ken Parker did when you said his landlord shouldn't be putting a sign up on the building. And he stepped down because, not because it was his building, but because he was a tenant, and he shouldn't be participating up there because of a conflict of interest. I'm asking that you do the right thing. There's the perception of a conflict of interest. I'm asking that anything dealing with what is referred to as Specific Plan 89-1, or what we refer to as the LART, at least until your year is finished, you remove yourself from any participation in discussion and votes because of the perception that you may have a conflict of interest. Thank you very much for your time, and good luck tonight, and I hope you do represent us.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak?
I agree with the last speaker. My name is Carol Berry. I've gotten to know some of you over the last few days via email communiques. I know that I don't wish to have my quality of life diminished or destroyed, or my streets and roadways, neighborhoods destroyed. I've gotten to know a lot of my neighbors over the, do you guys in Carrier Row want your quality of life to get ruined, and your property values to go down? Yeah, we don't want that. So we are asking you to do the right thing. I would ask that Troy Edgar recuse himself from this conversation and deliberation. And I want to know how Los Alaminos could allow this to occur when we already have impacted roadways on Cattella. The trucks will be impeding the flow of traffic to the medical center, schools, the children cross Cattella. It's not safe. And if these trucks take an alternate route because they're late to their bay, and they've got to go, you know, down other streets through our neighborhoods in a rush, we don't want that. So I would charge you to all do the right thing by your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this matter?
I'm Sherri Poe. I live in Carrier Row, but this issue is much more than Carrier Row. I hope you know that. And it also involves Cypress, because we've spoken to many people in Cypress who just don't want it. They have not been informed. The city council in Cypress did not inform any of them. Their roads will be impacted also. I brought packets. We've walked the streets, again, over many years, living in Carrier Row. I've walked streets. And Essex Drive, and I'm going to turn in one from Wendy Tomlin of Ticonderoga. These are voting people. And we're going to give you a vote to do what you need to do legally to take care of us. That's the way I feel. And, you know, personally, I think it's time to quit being cozy with Cypress Council. It's time that we stand on our own two feet, make our own decisions, and protect all of us. Not that our property is any more valuable than anybody else's, but it's our quality of life. Our kids go to the high school. They go to the junior high, McAuliffe. Those trucks whiz by there. It'll be five times more, or even more than that. We have children at Los Alaminos Elementary. Those kids are going to be in jeopardy, too. Cypress needs to think about other people instead of being so selfish. And that's all I have to say. Everything that everybody else has said, I agree with 100%.
Are there any other speakers that would like to speak on this matter?
Hi, I'm Jeff Hubert. I'm on my 47th year as a Carrier Row
I'm on my 47th year as a Carrier Row resident. But again, this isn't a Carrier Row issue. We've heard from people in Cypress. I know many, many volunteers that have approached me. They want to do something. We had a woman that went into Cypress's area and went over to Shaw's Carpets' territory. That was wonderful, because it removed some old scabs. It removed some old injuries that were impacted upon their citizens that Cypress did to them when they put in Shaw's carpet. I pretty much have been walking the streets, and I really didn't have time to prepare for anything. This was handed to me Sunday on my way to church, and I put together a form letter and managed to find all of my great, wonderful volunteers. There was-- it wasn't anyone-- it wasn't me or anybody else. It was just all of us, who just formed together. We probably had anywhere from three to five volunteers per street in Carrier Row and New Dutch that wanted to do something. And I also had a lot of people that were just irate about what's happening. We all know that the number-one concern in the city has been traffic. And as a 47-year resident-- or on my 47th year-- this has been an issue that has been a problem time and time again. We have a lot of citizens that can't be here tonight, because they are out of town, because they're ill, because they're old--
They don't know.
--they don't know-- stuck in traffic. Yeah. There are a lot of people that really asked me to be here tonight to be their voice, because-- and this is what really startled me-- there were public comments from some of you on the dais, that you were very, very concerned about our future relationship with Cypress. I wanted-- I'm here to tell you that you guys-- and I hope that you all know this. I hope that this is deep in your heart. This is rooted in your hearts. You are here to protect us, and we need you to protect us. Let me read the letter here real quick. This is a letter that I composed, and I had everybody sign. I had about an 85%-- we've probably-- in Carrier Row and New Dutch, we've had about 85% of the people sign this. I have not heard or seen from any of my street leaders tell me that they had somebody that refused to sign. There was one person that refused to sign. And that was because that person did not believe that the city council was there to protect them. And they thought that we were wasting his time. But that signing that letter-- this letter here-- it was a waste of his time. Let me read you the letter. Dear Los Alamos Cypress City Councils, as a registered voter and resident of Los Alamos, I'm asking you to impose measures on the proposed 33-acre truck distribution terminal proposed by the Prologus Corporation that will halt the project until the concerns of our residents can be further addressed. As this proposal stands right now, there are numerous impacts this project will pose upon our residents of Los Alamos and Cypress that will negatively affect our quality of life. These impacts include, but are not limited to, increased traffic, noise, hours of operation, pollution and fumes, damage to the Los Alamos infrastructure and roadways, cost to the Los Alamos taxpayers for excessive road repairs, safety for our children and families-- my son crosses Cotella every morning to go to McAuliffe on his bicycle-- cut through traffic into our neighborhoods to avoid traffic jams from the trucks that are on-- that will be on Cotella, rezoning the property without public input, and the current LART agreement that has obviously been breached or violated. These impacts, as well as others, known and unknown-- we don't even know the unknown-- will be imposed on us if this development is allowed to progress as-is. It will be a major negative impact on our quality of life that no one company or city should have the right to inflict on our citizens. You have the ability, right now, in a proactive manner, by way of an extensive environmental impact report, to address and require mitigation of these impacts as part of the state of California SEQA approval process. As a Los Alamos resident, and for the reasons listed above, I oppose any efforts to impose this development on our citizens until these impacts can be addressed in detail in the appropriate SEQA document as to the specific steps that Prologus and the City of Cypress will take to mitigate them. Thank you. Here's one really nice piece of information right here, for anybody that's even on the fence about this. I have a document-- I'll wrap it up. I have a document here. They're both the same document. One is signed by J.M. Iveler. The other one is signed by Carol and Chuck Sylvia. If that doesn't speak volumes, I don't know what does.
Thank you, Mr. Hubert.
Thank you for your time.
Are there any other members of the public that would wish to speak?
I have two minutes left.
Sure, please. Come forward.
I worked for 30 years in Compton on-- I drove there, drove back for 30 years, sat in the same chair on the Alameda Corridor. And that's what Cotella is going to be if this goes through-- the Cotella Corridor. If you ever get a chance to go up there, if you're brave enough, that's what it's going to be like. Sorry about my water. I'm done.
Thank you.
Warren, you've got Mrs. Waddle.
Sure, Ms. Waddle.
Okay. Well, in the Orange County breeze today, Prologus is saying that it's multi-tenants, and again, utilization. You look at building number three. You look at the size of that building. That is a building for conveyor belts and semi-truck docks, and in the center for loading your delivery trucks. And I've been in-- as I said before, and I told you when I came down here last week-- I've been in the Cerritos Distribution Center, a lot smaller than that building. But that's basically what this is-- a high-end turn center for distribution-- mail distribution. So, I don't know, you know, if they're denying about amazon.com. I don't know about this. But if it's smaller tenants and only 176 truck bays twice a day, it does not make sense, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom von Hofgarden, 4702 Howard Avenue. I got to go meet with Prologus and Jerry early on, and tried to explain that what they want to do by the hotel wasn't going to fly. Lexington wasn't going to fly. This is just a tip of the iceberg. Then, at the meeting, when it got kind of down dirty, and I said, you know, "What are you going to do when you don't get your left turn?" And she says, "Well, we're just going to do U-turns." That's Prologus' answer. They're going to do U-turns with those big rigs. The writing's on the wall. You've heard enough. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sure.
I just want to mirror the sentiments of those that have spoken before me. And I don't know if this is kosher to do or not, but Mr. Murphy, I voted for you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Gross, I voted for you, too, sir. And Mr. Edgar, I voted for you for Assembly to enhance your career. So, you know, I would just like to say that, as a young civic-minded person, what's going on and what's about to go on is really unacceptable. And I care so much about this community. I've lived here my whole life, and I need all of you folks to be in our corner and to have our best interests at heart. You know, I love our surrounding communities, but as far as trying to placate Cypress, I'm not interested in it. And as one of your constituents, I mean, you guys-- you kind of owe us, you know? Like, my vote, in part, brought you here. And I don't want this in my community. And, you know, I am of the generation that's going to be taking over when you guys are done. And I don't want this. It doesn't fit. I don't want it here. So, thank you for hearing our words.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Yes, sir. Okay. Murphy, I voted for you, too, just to let you know. But I think you guys are going to do the right thing when you go behind that door there. My only concern is, eventually, after you guys do the right thing, I believe these people will try to get you guys to take a bribe. So, I just want to let you guys know, you know, you've got to do the right thing. In my Bible, it says, "God hates dishonest scales." And I just want to throw that up there. You guys say, "And God we trust," and that all you guys would do the right thing and not take that bribe when it comes. So, thank you, guys. Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Mayor, if I may, before we move forward, if I could-- there are some people who-- oh, and Mr. Hubert has something. For the people who didn't get a chance to speak, if we could pan out to the audience, and for those of you who are in support of what's being brought forward-- can everyone stand up that supports them? And can we pan out there? For all of you who are in support of what's being talked about tonight-- there you go. So, what I'm trying to say is there are some people who don't feel comfortable getting up and speaking, but they did take the time to come down here and to let us know what their will is. And I just wanted to say thank you to all of you for taking the time out of your schedule. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak? Seeing none, we're going to go ahead and close--
I'm sorry. In my speech, I didn't get a chance to hand in all the documents. I had my other street leaders hand theirs in. I've got the remainder of the 85% of New Dutch and Carrier Row.
Okay. Okay, so--
Can I ask one question? Do we have any idea of approximately how many letters are there, Mr. Hubert? Just approximately?
You know, I'd say the average street, there's probably 22, 24, 26 houses per street--
Okay.
--if based in Carrier. And I've-- basically, there's still some that are still out, but from what I've heard from the return to my street leaders, it's about 85%.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, seeing no further requests for public speaking, we're going to go ahead and close that portion, and we're going to now go into closed session.
The session under the provisions of Section 54956.9 Subd.4 of the Brown Act of the California Government Code.
Okay. And if we-- how about we just take a brief five-minute recess, and then we'll reconvene back there? Thank you.[1642.86]